6:30, call the meeting to order. Taskmaster, take a roll.
Mordini?
Here.
Sarchat?
Here.
Lane?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
DeBorak?
Here.
First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I have no additions or corrections. I'd take a motion.
Motion to approve with resuscitation.
Second.
Roll call.
DeBorak?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sarchat?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item is public comments. Time and place for comments on any items not in a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to address the council. Hearing none, seeing none. Moving on to item five. Consent agenda. Take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Lane?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
DeBorak?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sarchat?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item six. New business. Action item one. Consider motion to approve resolution 2017-105. Just gonna stop right there. And who's here to make a presentation on that? Lawrence George.
Good evening. Bob Gibson with Civil Design Advantage. 345 Savvy Crossroads Drive, Cheltenham. We were here, I don't know, a couple of months ago before and brought this situation up. And a new request. Went back and met with association members. Had a meeting with Association, with Creek County's Association, and discussing the issue of eliminating the requirement for brick, the 30 percent requirement for brick that for units that face the public right of way. And I won't go through all the details of the history of that and everything. Answer any questions you guys might have. But it should be included in your packages letter as a result of that meeting with the homeowners' association where they determined they were in favor of it. And kind of as a result of that, we fleshed out a little bit more. I guess it's better this way, isn't it? The landscape plan of improving that buffer along Third Street there, and where there originally been just a row of pine trees and maybe a quarter of a third of them died off. Gonna replace them as each individual unit is built and irrigation extended to the back from each unit. The trees will be planted. And we specified the types of trees. Create a little more variety. Instead of just the pine trees, the white pines. We're gonna have spruce and some deciduous and some flowering ornamental as well. So the association was happy with that. And as you know, P&amp;Z, we presented it to them afterwards. Mayor and Mayor recommended approval as well. Very straightforward to answer any questions we have.
Ron, any comments from P&amp;Z?
I don't know. I wasn't there.
Oh, you weren't here for that one?
Sorry.
All right. Well, based on what I saw, it seemed like all the questions are answered. Gary?
Part of the homeowners' association was there. And they were in agreement to what was presented. A few questions were asked by P&amp;Z. And the homeowners' association was under the understanding that once this is brought up, it is the homeowners' association to continue perpetual care of that area.
Even now, at this point, this, each of these homes are on an individual lot, but they're surrounded by an outlawed. That outlawed is already in the possession of the association. So the association is responsible for the landscape and the maintenance of it. But the building, Jamie, of the last these houses, the wind will be putting the trees and irrigation in.
So that letter not in our packet. I think it was in the, either in the P&amp;Z packet or in a previous packet to us. But it's immaterial. As you guys, I think, in Washington meeting, I think the only question was what we're actually waiving is along Third only? Or Third and Vista and... Just so I'm sure.
Well, the way that ordinance is written here is against Public Street. All these elevations right here, all the backs here, which is against Third, and then this one right here, which is against Vista Lake.
Okay. So it's Vista Lake, Third. And what's the one on the bottom?
Well...
It's the Public Street.
Yeah. But it's only this one, isn't it? I think actually, yeah, that one's already built. It's got it anyway.
It's the southeast side of Lot Two. The east side's of Lot Three, Two, Three through Eight, and the north side of Lot Eight. And that would build into that resolution that waives it.
Okay. And that's, I just wanna make sure the sentiment that the homeowners agreed to is per the verbiage that's on here. And I think that it is. There was some question about it, if I remember correctly, in Washington P&amp;Z meeting of what we're talking about. And I think we're all good. I just wanna double check that.
We talked to a homeowner down there Sunday, and they thought they were much in favor of this. They thought it would've looked completely weird is the nice way to put what they said to put brick on the back of it. And they said they were much in favor of having new trees 'cause it's all dead down there right now.
The only question I would have is replacement of the trees. Is that up to the homeowners' association if these trees don't make it?
Yes.
Once developed?
Jamie Myers, 2540 Seventy Third Street in Urberville. Yeah, the, once they're put in and they're watered in, first of all, there's a year warranty from our landscape company. But then beyond that, that's all part of the association's management is to keep, keep the buffer and maintain it from there on out.
And they were good with that. Pardon? And they were good with that.
Okay.
It's a fresh one.
Yes.
I was just curious as to who drafted this. I wonder whose opinion is that this was such a diminutive change?
Could you repeat the question? I'm sorry.
This is "Whereas City Council has reviewed this matter and believes that such a diminutive change in the buildings." I'm wondering whose opinion is that it's such a diminutive change?
We'll remove that.
Where is that? In the "whereas" is? Yeah, it's in the last "whereas," first sentence.
So we're not, excuse me, we're not setting any sort of precedent here because the homeowners' association does have the say. If it was completely up to us, then it would be particularly a different...
You're not setting any precedent because you've looked at the facts, and they're very specific to this particular location and homeowners' association approval and everything else that went into it.
I understand. I just don't want another developer coming in and saying, "All right, well, we did this." But it's not the same. Thank you.
Go ahead and make a motion to approve resolution 2017-105.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sarchat? Lane?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
DeBorak?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item two. Consider motion to approve resolution 2017-106, approving an acquisition plan for Tournament Club of Iowa Outlot Beach.
I'm Jerry Oliver. I'm a civil engineering consultant, 2486 Street in Des Moines, here on the Gavin Nat Properties. You may have in your packet an aerial photo that does show a portion of Tournament Club golf course that extends actually beyond the golf course boundary. Actually, it's not a part of the green, but it is a part of a cart turnaround, which is the wider area you see here within a triangle. That cart turnaround is on Nat Properties' property. And what is being proposed is a plat of survey of this triangular area that would facilitate the transfer of that property from Nat Properties to Tournament Club such that the Tournament Club will not have to reconstruct their turnaround. And that plat of survey is represented by this little triangle. Happy to answer questions.
Very straightforward.
Does that turnaround on the number five chief's?
I, I actually can't answer that. I don't know. I'm not a golfer myself. I'm a surveyor, and I don't know what tea that is or what green that is, actually. Is it a tea or a green? I don't know.
It's tea. If it's where I think it is, up at the top of the hill?
It is, yeah.
Near the...
Here's Hug.
Yeah. Near where the old corn crib used to be. I don't know if it still is or not.
I remember that. It's still there. It's still there. My wife still thinks it would make a great gazebo.
I'm gonna make a resolution to my friend's corn crib to approve 2017-106.
Second.
Roll call, please.
DeBorak?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sarchat? Lane?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Motion carries. Item three. Consider motion to approve resolution 2017-104, extending a moratorium on fireworks sales.
Thank you, Mayor. We've been hearing that the subject of fireworks will be again visited by the Iowa Legislature. And it was staff's thought process that no matter what we put together for the sales, it would be probably have to be changed by the beginning of the year next year. So we're running the moratorium at this time through the end of the year with changes to take place in the fireworks if such is made by the legislature at the beginning of next year when we know what the, the new rules and regulations will be that's coming from the state. So all this does is take our current moratorium, and it takes it through the end of the year.
And Amy, I know we spoke on this and the best way to handle it. So any other comments from you on this?
No, other than this really will only affect the upcoming December sales period that would allow, would have allowed sales within permanent buildings during that one month period.
And to further that, this isn't changing our, when you can discharge them?
Correct. This is only on sales. It does not affect the use.
And we still will ultimately need to come back. And once we figure out next year, most likely sometime, yes.
You're going to need to deal with the sales.
Yes.
You can't keep kicking the can down. This is really your last chance, shot to do that because you really need to have something in place or that resolved before the sales period begins next spring and summer.
But by then, we'll know what the State House is.
Yes. Or know that they're not going to do anything, and then you know what the...
Yep. And we'll follow the lead of some of the other communities and the lawsuits that they've had. Okay.
When we do these moratoriums, as a general rule, is there a limit to how long or...
It's a reasonable, there is no, you know, for fireworks, three months and something else, six months. It's, the courts would look at what's reasonable under the circumstances. And under these circumstances, I think that's probably reasonable, but it wouldn't be to extend it further than that.
So we'll be able to approximately if this state does...
By the time they gavel out?
Yeah. So it just depends on...
But, but, but sales won't be again until what, May? June?
June.
Yeah, so I mean, we'll have our plans in place before then.
Unless though that's changed.
Yeah.
There's actually been some thought that the state legislature will remove cities, counties, and local jurisdictions completely from the process.
Yep.
So we won't have any say?
The say will be set.
Fine. Taken.
Yeah. Agreed. Motion.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Lane?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
DeBorak?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sarchat?
Motion carries. Item four. Consider motion to approve second reading ordinance 2017-900, stop yield and no parking. Take a motion.
Is that moved?
Questions, comments?
Oh, go ahead and get a second, and then we'll have discussion.
Second.
Discussion.
Okay. Yeah, I came down and met with Mr. Mahana 'cause I had some calls about residents down there after the letter went out. And he told me, I went and I met with the residents afterwards, and they were worried about their gravel parking place on the, beside the street. Mr. Mahana assured me that it would stay, that would not go away. And I went down and told them that. They felt a lot better about it. But one of their questions is, why are, why are we allowing parking on the side of the street where the mailboxes are?
We look at quite a few different items. That's one of them. We look at water mains and fire hydrants. We had, that's an area where it's kind of difficult, too. We're trying to match no parking with the, the new area versus some of the older area also. And really, the apartment complexes, if I, if you're talking about Van Dorn and Wood Street, those two areas right there, we had to kind of try to match up with what was going on there at the existing time. So really, I guess in a long answer, that's it, right there. A lot of things go into it, and this was, what we felt was the, you know, best blend.
They, they wondered how that would affect mail delivery, if there's cars parked by the mailboxes.
We have other areas in town that are the same way. It hasn't affected them. I know the mail people get out if there's a car parked there, but most of the time, those people are respectful, not, no. I can't say that that's gonna be the case all the time. But at this time, we have other areas in town, and it seems to be working.
There's, there's state code that dictates how far you can park from a mailbox, even in a parking area.
And that was probably their partner exactly. Okay, that's the side of the street you can park on, but you can't park close to mailboxes. So there's gonna be a little, very little on-street parking. Correct?
And I can empathize with that. I mean, it, it would only, it wouldn't necessarily apply on Sundays when the mail... And to me, just what Mike said, fire hydrants trump mailboxes. I mean, it's not great, but you're gonna want the slim chance of having to use a hydrant and being that, being accessible to me outweighs the more frequent and minor, in the grand scheme of things, potential blocking of mailboxes.
I think you're right. The mail person will get out of the truck and still deliver it. It's not like their mail won't get delivered.
But I appreciate you meeting with them just knowing that this has been the way that it is now for a long time. It's sort of expected, quite honestly, some people to show up and be a little bit more upset than, other than that, they seem to be okay with it.
Yeah. Yeah. Once, once we explained that they would not lose that parking spot out front, I'll tell you how long they've been parking there, but everybody'd make fun of me.
David, remember.
They were parking there when their grandma owned the house.
Roll call.
DeBorak?
Yes.
Mordini? Sarchat? Lane?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item five. Consider motion to approve resolution 2017-111, approving pay-up number four in the amount of $77,000, 339 for the police station model project.
Very quickly, Mr. Mayor, this will take us down to our final retainage. The police moved into their building on Friday and are in the process of getting settled in. There's always a few things that need to be done once you move in, just like a house. And they're working through those items right now. However, we, all of the items that have been identified don't even come to $2,000. We have plenty of retaines with $12,000.
And I just met with the general contractor, with Matt Carnes, today, late, late in the afternoon. And I have pretty confidence there won't be any other funds needed. I think Kim and I got it worked out, the issues that we had. So if there may be something small pops up that we, that was on the radar right now, I don't think we'll need any of that.
Take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Don't wait, Ron, sorry.
Does, we have a total cost for the community?
Yes.
We had actually a de-debt last month of $22,000. So the total cost that we have right now on this contract is 246,067. I don't know what the architect is right now. And council budget is 310.
We do have some minor equipment left to buy yet that was outside of the Ball's bid 'cause we didn't want to pay the markup to have them put in certain, certain items that I bought direct. So we'll still have some small purchases on top of 246. But we did it that way to save money.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Lane?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
DeBorak?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sarchat?
Motion carries. Item six. Dart update. Mr. Walters.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff. On October 5th, 2017, I attended workshop number three for Des Moines Transit Funding Study. I was at the Des Moines Partnership. The emphasis of workshop number three was to discuss the baseline funding and service scenario options. There are multiple scenario groups that were developed, and they looked at maintaining the existing services as well as what they considered upgrading to a moderate growth scenario, which was essentially adding additional service lines over the long term. The results of the study to date are looking at a combination of supplementing the property taxes with other different funding sources. The recommendation currently moving forward would be to freeze the 2018 tax levy raise for each community and then look at a number of other scenarios or options considering vehicle, a new vehicle tax on license plates, the potential for additional hotel motel taxes, an increase in sales tax, as well as additional business partnerships that they currently have with their unlimited access routes. The consultant, HNTB, is gonna finalize the report here in the next few weeks, and we'll make the recommendation based on those types of scenarios. I think by and large, the group of people that were there representing the communities favored this scenario the most. It still doesn't change what we would be doing, although I think there's still opportunities there if we wanted to consider Dart in the future. I think it's an option, but at some point in time, council's gonna have to look at because Dart isn't ever going to come back to council and ask them, "Are you sure you want to opt out?" Yep. Down the road, there was a scenario where we wanted to opt back in. We may have to pay higher rate, but that's unknown at this time. Like I said, the past couple times I've been up here, I think the route to initially opt out is the right decision. But the door is still open. There's still some opportunities. Do you want to have any questions? Glad to try to get through.
I don't have any questions, just to comment. And it's the same as it's been since we started out on this path is that if Dart's answer is more taxes, I think they're missing the boat. Unless they're gonna fix the service issue they have with the surrounding communities, and so it's not looked at as something other than a subsidization of Des Moines from us, I think they're just completely missing the boat. Whether they charge us five times more next time or it won't be next time.
We're one of five count, or five communities that have opted out starting next year or in 2019, so far. So they...
Yeah, I hope they aren't so short-sighted because just to tax people is not the answer. But again, as I've said before, I appreciate you going down there for us. And I know a lot of people you hear around town, at least I do when I'm on the council, says what the city should do, but very seldom do they actually step up and help. They just want to talk about us. So I appreciate you helping out, doing your part to help.
Thank you.
Thanks, man.
Mayor's report, as I'm feeling slightly under the weather, you lost my gain. I'm not gonna say much tonight. So I've asked Mahana to give a brief update on the property on Roosevelt Rob, so you don't stick your foot in your mouth. And I'll move past Mr. DeBorak.
I only have one thing, just from this last week's parks meeting. Just gave a breakdown of what we approved the meeting before on the first phase of the three parks that we're gonna be focused on. And the committee, commission is excited to see that there's progress being made after quite a few years of discussion and ready to move on to the next phase of helping with whatever may be accessorizing, putting in the playground equipment, the different things that'll be coming with Phase Two. So just happy and thanking the council for that support and getting the ball rolling with the improvement of the parks and they basically laying that infrastructure for future development. That's really all I have.
Mr. Mordini?
I have several things, actually. First, I'd like to thank Gary and Kathleen for meeting me on the development here in town earlier today, go over some concerns that have been voiced on what has been going on or what hasn't been going on, I guess, in one of the developments. So thanks for taking the time to do that. I'd also like to thank Gary. We had a, some positive feedback, reference what I mentioned last time on Hanson. Also, I think Public Works, they're very happy with the way that turned out. Had some drainage issues there in the past. Gary took me down and showed me where that went. And so far, so good on that. Hopefully, I guess rain will show us how, how good it does in the end. Along that same lines on the parks, I met with Gary at one of the parks that were on there that some of the neighbors down there have coined the phrase "forgotten park" 'cause that's what they fill. So I thank Gary for coming down and also Public Works for cleaning that up. And hopefully, time will tell whether they're right or whether they're wrong. I'll leave it at that. Had something, but I won't steal the PD's thunder. And on another note, something I've noticed before and I just keep forgetting. And if it's just me, let me know. But does anybody else, when you're leaving, come and go going to the east of the parking lot? Is that blind spot a concern to anybody else? As you're exiting, come and go? And I realize there may not be a code or anything, but I, myself and I noticed others in front of me when we were leaving kind of hitting the brakes as if you're about to get T-boned by a car or not because anybody's doing the wrong thing. You just can't see.
And it's a very bad intersection.
On Third or on Broadway?
We're on the Third. I mean, I think it's all legit legally and everything, but I, I don't know what we can do between us and the business to fix that.
But it used to be worse when they used to could park all the way up to the end of that block.
It did, yeah.
So then we moved the parking back though.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I think all that was the right thing to do. I just don't know if that means cutting those bushes down further or maybe we can't do anything about it. I'm sure it's all legal, but I, maybe that's something if we just bring up to them. I just cringe. I think something, it's a matter of time. Somebody's gonna get it. They haven't already. I don't know what we can do on that or, other than say please.
So we're tapped.
Something to think about.
I know exactly what you're talking about. And probably the only reason nothing's happened yet is because that's a 25 mile per hour zone. yet is because that's a 25 mile per hour zone.
Yeah, it's just a matter of time. I mean, it's almost happening, because I can't stay around it, but I'm sure there's others as well. Thanks, Mr. Sarchet.
I don't have anything, but I thought of a question on, so we approved the second reading for the no parking over here, so we'll do the third reading, and it'll go in force after the next meeting. Do we know or have an estimate on when those Deer Haven roads will be open? Does it coincide with?
It's going to be pretty close. Excuse me, Deer Haven will probably be in front of the PNC, and if they can get some work done, they may be in front of the council the next meeting, the 23rd.
Okay, and I know that was in your memo, too, but I just wanted to, yeah, okay, thank you.
Lane.
Just a couple of things. I wanted to thank you, Mayor and Administrator, and everybody else for allowing me to go to the Iowa League of Cities meetings, conferences. It was in Davenport, where my daughter happens to live, so I was able to save hotel costs that way. But it's a very good thing to go to, to, they have lots of interesting topics, had some things on the future of driverless cars that was a little interesting and stuff, and just to meet with the other people that are in the other towns, and pretty much everybody I talked to is gonna outright ban fireworks. There wasn't hardly anybody that thought that they would be allowing them this coming And the other thing is I received an email, I don't know if anybody else has, from a woman up here by church in Third Street. She was wanting to know if anything was gonna be done about the speed limit on there, she has to back out onto the road. I don't think we, we don't have any plans of doing anything. Along that, she wanted to know what the status was of the traffic signals, but I don't think traffic signals way up by Casey's is gonna help her back out of her yard, but I wanted to bring it up. Maybe if you could include in your update, Gary, where we're at on the traffic signal situation.
I can, I can tell you right now, we're working to try to get those with the funding for light spring early summer of next year. We've got several grant applications in, and we're waiting to hear back. If those grant applications work, this will be a very decent project on the city's budget.
Sounds good, thank you. Mr. Anderson.
I'd just like to echo what Dave said about the parks, I think it's great that people can see some action there. Gonna get that infrastructure in so we can expand them and do other things in the future. It's great that we have money to spend this year in parks. I think it's something that's needed done for quite a while, and I meant to come to the meeting Monday night because it's one of the parks that I would like to see renamed. I won't talk about it tonight, but something I'd like to talk about at the Park Commission and see how they feel about it. And back to the no parking down here, we're, we took the parking off one side of the street because we're anticipating more traffic out of that development down there, correct? That's what I thought. If we find out in the future that we're not having a lot of traffic out of there, is it possible to?
You always can look at things, sir.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Counsel, a discussion, nothing, Mr. German.
First, before I go into part of my report, I'd like to yield to Florida Trace, I think he has somebody he'd like to introduce to the council, the mayor and council today.
This is Gabriel Wilson. He's a full-time police officer with the Story City Police Department right now, lives in Ankeny, and applied during our hiring process last year, was on our hiring list, and as we've got some other things wrapped up, I wanted to add another part-time person to give us more flexibility in our scheduling. This is a caveat, this doesn't change any of the spending on part-time, of line items the same as approved in the budget, just gives us more versatility, kind of a deeper bench to go to when we have our full-time guys that need vacation to utilize their PTO or sick time or issues like that.
Welcome, welcome. Welcome aboard. My other item deals with 504 Roosevelt. I want you to know that there's still a continuing investigation going here, but last week, Wednesday, I do believe, the state fire marshal gave Hope City the right to go in and demolish that building. Up until that time, they were still looking over the scene to gain more clues. The company that's doing the demolition was there Thursday. Friday was a nasty day with not any work being completed. They pulled off the job to do a quick job. They will be back this week, and is it tomorrow, Wednesday, Mike, that they're coming back? You told me, but I don't remember, because tomorrow's looking pretty tough itself. With what I've seen this company do so far, if they get back and they get two good days on it, you're not gonna see much left on that corner. So if you want a picture, now's the time to do it. With that, Mayor, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Turned your report.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Engineer.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Call of works.
Nothing.
Technology.
Nothing.
Finance.
Fire department.
Police department.
Just a couple of things, quick. Got moved into the police department, if anyone wants to take a look at, it's not all the way done, but I'd be happy to walk anybody through it that wanted to see it. We'll be planning a formal open house once we get every hall or ducks in row and all of final little. Few things are backordered in specialty items the police department requires that are still, we're waiting on for, everything's completely done, but 98% done. And then, also, I just wanted to comment, I was hoping Chief Govan's beard, I, we, for the first time in history, our two associations, the police department and fire department, worked together for the pancake breakfast that we have on Saturday, is to benefit the two local boys that are going through cancer treatment right now and their families, and it was, it was an excellent event. It was very exciting to work with the fire department in that way, and to have that, as I've been told in the past, that cooperation wasn't, wasn't there, and it was a really good event. We had every officer that was on duty volunteer to come in and help on their own time for five and a half hours for that event, and it went very well, so. I didn't, I was moved around so much, I don't know who got to, who got there or not, I know I missed a lot of people, but, and they, I don't want to steal Dan's thunder, but he texted me and said they raised over $4,500 for those two families at it. That's all I had.
Good job, thanks for working with them on that.
I think the officers had a blast, they were excited to keep doing joint events for fundraising in the future.
Good about, good pancakes as you can get anywhere in any restaurant, as far as I'm concerned, they're fresh, you get them right off the grill, it was nice. It was nice to see Hope City's finest on both sides there, it was, the city was very well represented, I thought. Thank you.
Yep.
Just for the record, I am diabetic and can't eat pancakes.
Library report, nobody take a neighborhood citizen's group, I take a motion.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
I.